Two accidents, two years ago, within an eight-month period. And my lower back, my nerves were being too bad. My legs were going numb, my feet were going numb. I couldn't walk anymore. So I finally said, I gotta get something done. And they picked me up.
Yeah, and four's off so far.
Four's off, yeah.
Picked him up off the.
There was a problem with the closing anyway, wasn't gonna go anyway.
Oh, good, good.
There was, I don't know, found something or, I don't know what they found, but it wasn't going anyway.
For walking. Have to get picked up.
The other one's still going that you gotta sign for. That one's okay. We approve that last.
I'll be there.
We approve that last.
I, I get back Sunday nights.
It's fine years ago. About seven years ago, I spent a lot of time. Unable to move.
Four years, just up there too, after that. Lower back, they called, you know, killed me. Couldn't work.
We go by that clock?
Yeah.
Yep, this is official police.
Oh, my.
Mike, are you ready?
What, that's what the script says?
Do you show up?
You got a minute.
Mike, are you ready? You're good, okay. I now call to order the regular, uh, session meeting of, of, of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs on Tuesday, July twenty-fifth, uh, twenty-seventeen at six-thirty. Roll call, please.
Uh, Mayor Alahuza is absent in excuse. Um, Vice Mayor Banther.
Here.
Commissioner Seber.
Here.
Commissioner Kikta.
Here.
And Commissioner Carr is absent in excuse.
Tonight's invocation will be given by city, oh, not city attorney, will be given by Reverend Jack Long. Please stand and remain standing for, for the, uh, for the pledge of allegiance.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for another day to serve you and others. These have met here today for the betterment of the community. Give them wisdom to confront the challenges and grace in all relationships. Thank you for the progress of the past, the work of the present, and the hope of the future. May Tarpon Springs know your blessings, prosper, and be an example to other communities. Watch over these, your servants. Protect those who protect us, both here and at home. Lord, we ask that you pour out your blessing upon our great nation that is under you. We pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will now go to, um, public comments on items that will not be heard tonight. Uh, you have, um, four minutes. Please, please, please state your name and address for the record.
I'm a little bit nervous. My name, my name is Harriet Kladakis, and I live on two fifteen West Lemon Street, considered to be a historic neighborhood. But yet, the city of Tarpon Springs has fixed every single road except ours. I've been trying to have section of West Lemon that has not been paved when Mr. Tom Forts or whatever was in charge. Then I went to see Mr. Lucoris, nothing. Then I went to, um, two years ago, the surveyors came and they took measurements. They told me that they'll do it. It still hasn't been done. Why? I have eight properties that you take my property taxes, your share, and I don't get any respect. Why? Why don't we have a street paved? Twice I had to, uh, fix my tires. Should I bring you the bill? They come and they patch it, and then it comes off. But yet, every other street is paved. And we, I'm representing my neighborhood, and I came here to get your opinion, or we're gonna go to take, um, legal matters into our hands. And they told me, when I called the late, the one that is in charge now, he told me, oh, the sewer or the sidewalk is broken. He gave me two, three excuses, and we don't have the money. But yet, you'll have money to do playgrounds. Now I hear that you're gonna have showers for the homeless. But you have money using our tax money, but not for my street. And you all call it historic, uh, neighborhood. This is what I had to say. I'd like to know when it will be done. Half of Lemon Street is paved, the side streets are paved, my Luther King and down are all paved, except part of Lemon Street where I live. And we, the rest of the neighborhood. They say it's broken, the side, uh, is broken, of course. They come to go fishing, there's no parking, and they come and park on the, on the sidewalk where my house is. The other day was so close on the grass that I called the police. They came and this is, there's nothing we can do because it's not on the paved sidewalk, it's on the grass. Well, he broke two, three blocks. That's how big it is. And we are tired of this. Why us? I'd like to know why we're not, y'all not paving a part of the, a house. This is what I'm here for.
Mark, you?
Just the way we've paved streets, the way we've done it for a long time, roads are prioritized, and the ones with the most serious conditions get paved. When that, when that street hits the level of being the most, Mrs. Kallakis has been explaining it several times. Um, so it's a priority system. When they come to you for road paving, the worst ones are paved, and they're rated every year, they're rerated, and those are paved. So I don't know quite where that one on the list are compared, but it's not as bad as the other streets that you've seen paved. And that's the simple, fair system that we do for everybody, and we've done it that way for a long time.
But yet, of Beth Street, part of it, y'all paved it. But now, my, they said, uh, the gentleman that is in charge now, he said, we flood my, the section, we flood. Uh, part of the side is broken, of course, your boats, the boats break, and not us. Go to any part of the town of Tarpon and it's flood. When it rains, it floods. It's not only my street. And they took share rate two years ago, and nothing is done. They now shouldn't pay for, uh, part of my property taxes to Tarpon. I have eight properties that you all get, uh, part of the taxes. And what do I get out of it? Nothing. Two flat tires. So what's gonna happen now? Should we go get, um, legal advice?
Well, that's your option, but I will have the, uh, city manager, um, get, get with you on, 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 on the exact ranking that your street's at, if it's on the rankings, for, for repair. So you can at least know your plan, okay?
I called, I spoke to the gentleman, I forgot his name, and he gave me those excuses, and he cost, uh, forgot, seven hundred fifty or something, and we don't have the money. But now you're gonna have money to build showers for the homeless.
Well, the, 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 uh, the city manager will, will be in touch with you.
But yet, you paved, uh, Beth Street. It doesn't make sense. My street is just as important.
The city manager will, 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 uh, be in touch with you to give you the exact ranking, okay?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi. Could you please pass this down? I'm Julie Washburn. I live at one-two-four East Lake Drive, Tarpon Springs, and I'm here representing Tarpon Springs Elementary School PTA. Um, we, it's come to our attention that Pine Street is not a designated school zone, and we were hoping that you could change that, please. Um, right now, people drive on Pine Street thirty miles per hour, which is the speed limit. But when children are coming and going from school, thirty miles per hour becomes a very scary speed limit. And, um, the maps that I've given you show where we would like you to designate that as a school zone. So then, when peop, the kids are coming and going from school, they would only be allowed to drive fifteen miles per hour instead of the thirty. Um, we think that would make it a lot safer for our kids. Um, I'd invite you to come watch. School starts August tenth. Um, it gets a little bit crazy. Kids are very wild people. And, um, you can watch, it's very hair-raising and kind of scary every day with the kids coming and going. And, um, because the city is right here, there's big trucks that come and go. And those trucks have, don't have to go anything but thirty miles an hour. So when trucks going thirty miles an hour, um, it takes a lot more to stop a truck than a car. And so if a kid darts into the road, it's scary. And so we were hoping that you guys could designate that a school zone for us, please.
Can I respond?
Yes, sure.
Thank you. Um, thank you for bringing this forward tonight. Um, I know that I've spoken with some people, uh, that sit on the SAC committee about this. Um, and I spoke with chief about it. I know they're working on some, uh, plans to try and make it a little better for the children, uh, where they would cross in one area instead of all over, all over on that road. Uh, I've also asked, uh, about putting up a, the light, the flashing light. I've asked for that, and I, one of our commissioners, he's not here tonight, um, sits on, what's the name of that board? He sits on Down County.
Yeah.
And, no, um.
The traffic safety.
Traffic safety for public schools. Um, and he's told us at our last meeting here that, that was a discussion. Um, so I know that something is work, is in the works right now. Uh, between us putting up those signs and, um, and the county is aware of the situation as well. So I know they're working on it.
Okay.
Um, I, I would be happy to follow up with you if you'd like.
I would really appreciate that.
And, and see where we are with that.
All right. Um, and I know, um, another issue, there are two stop signs that are four-way stops on, um, Distin Avenue and Leves, should've kept in the map for myself. Levison, um, thank you. And I know the rule typically is that you can't have crossing guards at four-way stop signs. But, um, if you could please consider also giving us a crossing guard at, um, Distin and Pine Street, that would also keep our kids a lot safer. A lot of the kids go across that, and, um, again, they're pretty wild. Um, if, so if you could afford a crossing guard also, we'd really love you to consider that, please.
Major, do you have any comments as far as the speed zone there?
Uh, I know that Officer Gear's been working in part of the project over there. The church actually already put up a, uh, fence, a chain link fence, which part of the problem, a lot of kids were getting parked and dropped off there and running across the street, mid-street crossings, which, you know, we're, we don't promote that at all anywhere, and getting across that road. So they did help, and they were good neighbors, uh, and put up a fence there, which should help eliminate a lot of those issues that you've been seeing with kids getting across Pine Street. And would force everybody to use one of the marked crosswalks. I know that Tom Funtz is working on the, uh, crosswalk projects, and I'll get with Officer Gear, who will give you those zones and stuff.
No, uh, I just wanna say that, uh, you know, we look at it, we do have a school resource officer that does it, work with them and stuff, that's through them and the police department, should you work for. Um, the, the, the crossing guard at four-way stops usually, you know, the school's responsible for those things. If we started hitting other schools and stuff, we'd be adding five or six because we've told others no. So you know all the schools we got in this town, so if we started doing four-ways and stuff like that, these, we'd be putting on seven or eight crossing guards. So, um, it's always been the things of either teachers or somebody monitoring those four-way stops and stuff. But again, with a school resource officer, things could be worked to be out there at different times and different safety things. So I'm sure the police department and through Matt Gear, who is your SRO, um, he can work on you with, with things such as that.
And the police department has been so good to our school. We're so grateful for our resource officer, and we do appreciate that. Thank you. Now, I know that there is a four-way stop by the middle school that does have, uh, um, crossing guard there. So I, I don't know what has to happen for that, for, uh, that to happen for us, but.
That's a major road and not, you know, local. There's a difference between Florida Avenue and Suns Office with Howard Park, that's a ma, that's considered a, a major road. That's where the difference is on, on that intersection.
Okay, thank you.
Make sure Commissioner Kika has your information, she can follow up, she said she.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Anybody else? Uh, nu, number four has been pulled, um, for the property purchase, but that was, that was, that was pulled by the realtor. So we'll go to our consent agenda. Number one, satisfaction and release of liens. Number two, uh, approved name change. Hampered Yards LLC bid number one-three-zero-zero-one-zero dash B dash C M. Number three, award file number one-seven-zero-one-five-one dash C dash R S. Um, virtualization service for public safety facility through the state of Florida contract number four-three-two-one-one-five-zero-zero dash W S C A. Dash one-five dash A C S, computer equipment peripherals and service. Is, i, is there, is there any items to pull? Uh, Commissioner?
I just have a question about item number two. Uh, probably Mark, he can answer this, but, um, I, I don't argue the name change, but I just question why we use a service instead of our own staff of, you know, it seems like with this amount, you could almost hire ten people to, uh, to do the, the job in, you know, with our own staff. So I was just questioning.
Well, we actually priced that out, and we keep watching every year. The reason we went out to it and stuff is, when you think of, of not only the pay, the benefits and everything else with it, this, this was costing. And I know we looked at it this year, and, uh, it's just with, with the salary benefits and all the things that comes with a position, this is, this, I forgot how much it saves, I'll get you how much it saves, but it, it saves money in the budget. It was one of the budget costing things, instead of adding a crew of people to, to do this. But we.
I looked at these properties, and I thought, wow, it's City Hall, you know, why aren't we doing it? But, you know, and when you look at the cost, so that's, that was my only concern.
Every year.
Are we looking at that? Okay.
That is, it saves a little, it doesn't save a lot, but it saves money. And, you know, when you see the budget, that hopefully is still balanced when I present it to you next week, um, e, every little bit helps on that thing. So, but again, it's evaluated every year, um, for that. If the price goes up, so it's equal to have our own people, then we'd, we'd change up and do that.
Okay, thanks.
Any public comments? Seeing none. Chair will enter into motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Kikta?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Banther?
Yes. We have to pull the, yeah, number, number four's been pulled. Okay, or, uh, or ordinances and, and resolutions. Um, five A is a legislative. Uh, application one-seven dash four-seven zoning and land use amendment, uh, hunt. Am I correct in heading over to, to you, Heather?
Heather, you're gonna present these together?
I'm gonna present these together.
All right, before we do that, then, since we have other quasi, um, applications tonight, why don't we do that all at one time?
The only thing is, the two conditional uses that were advertised as seven and eight are actually need to be continued to August because they were advertised for August one, not advertised for this meeting. So those should be continued to next week.
So, so when we need, we need to pull seven and eight?
Yes.
Okay.
Can we do that?
We need to say a date, certain, change the date.
There, the advertisement was for August first. They, they appeared on this agenda instead of on next week's agenda. So.
Do we need to do a motion for that?
Why don't you, just to formalize it?
Uh, motion to defer item number seven, uh, resolution twenty-seventeen dash two-seven, and number eight, resolution twenty-seventeen dash two-six to, 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 to the, the, uh, August first meeting.
Second.
Yep, you need a motion first.
Motion. Motion to, uh, move those to the August first meeting.
Second.
A roll call or a public comments and roll call, please?
Commissioner Kikta?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Banther?
Yes.
Okay, so Heather, we still have five B and six that are quasi, correct? All right, so we'll do, um, one quasi judicial announcement, and then I will read the ordinances. Um, for item number five. Uh, items five B and item six, that's ordinance twenty-seventeen dash twenty-two, and ordinance twenty-seventeen dash twenty-three on tonight's agenda are quasi judicial proceedings. Where the commission acts in a quasi judicial rather than a legislative capacity. At such a hearing, it is not the commission's function to make law, but rather to apply law, as already been established. In such a hearing, the commission is required by law to make findings of fact based upon the evidence presented at the hearing, and apply those findings to previously established criteria contained in the code, code of ordinances in order to make a legal decision regarding the application. The commission may only consider evidence at the hearing that the law considers competent, substantial, and relevant. If that evidence demonstrates that the applicant has met the criteria, then the commission is required by law to find in, in favor of the applicant. Conversely, if that evidence is not met, the applicant has failed to meet the criteria, the commission is required by law to find against the applicant. All witnesses must give their testimony under oath. All persons testifying must give their name and address for the record. All testimony and questioning must address matters that are relevant and material to the issues under consideration. City staff will present its testimony and evidence. The applicant will have an opportunity to cross-examine city staff. The applicant will present its testimony to witnesses, and city staff will have an opportunity to cross-examine the applicant's witnesses. Members of the public opposing the application will be given an opportunity to, to speak in opposition. After members of the public speaking in opposition have concluded, members of the public wishing to speak in support of the application will have the opportunity to do so. Each member of the public is limited to four minutes. The applicant will have an opportunity to make a closing argument or summary, after which city staff will be given an opportunity to make a closing argument or summary. Following that, the commission will consider the matter. Commissioners may ask questions of witnesses. Our first ordinance on item number five, this is a legislative ordinance, ordinance twenty-seventeen dash twenty-one, an ordinance of the city of Tarpon Springs, Florida. Amending the future land use map for approximately zero point four-five acres of property, nineteen thousand five hundred square feet. Located on the south side of Keystone Road, approximately two hundred feet east of the intersection of Keystone Road and Lake Tarpon Avenue. Application seventeen dash forty-seven from R L and R M, residential low and residential medium to R O G, residential office general. Providing for findings and providing effective date. It's first reading of ordinance twenty-seventeen dash twenty-one by title only. Second reading will be held following county review. It was published in the Tampa Bay Times by title with a map on June two, twenty-seventeen. Ordinance twenty-seventeen dash twenty-two, an ordinance of the city of Tarpon Springs, Florida, amending the official zoning map of the city of Tarpon Springs, Florida. For approximately zero point four-five acres of property, nineteen thousand five hundred square feet. Located on the south side of the Keystone Road, approximately two hundred feet east of the intersection of Keystone Road and Lake Tarpon Avenue, application seventeen dash forty-seven. From R one hundred A and R M fifteen, single-family residential and residential multifamily, to R O, residential office, providing for findings and providing effective date. It's the first reading of ordinance twenty-seventeen dash twenty-two by title only. Second reading to be held after county review. The ordinance was published in the Tampa Bay Times by title with a map on June two, twenty-seventeen. I would ask for anyone here for items five B, six, or six, to please stand and be sworn if you intend to testify this evening. I'm kinda thinking. Anybody else? Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you've given in this proceeding is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Heather?
Okay. These are two vacant properties that are adjacent to the existing Tarpon Turtle Annex, which is at the top of Lake Tarpon Avenue and Keystone Road. Those parcels, uh, currently are, um, joined by a right-of-way, which is a public alleyway, which actually goes down into Myers Lane. It does not actually connect to Lake Tarpon any longer. A portion of it was vacated in the past. As a result, the applicant, um, came to us and was looking for an option to utilize these properties. Um, when we met with the county, um, on behalf of the applicant and with the applicant, they really had some concerns about trying to bring a driveway for residential development across that, uh, curve on Keystone because of the limited access highway and all the drainage that they had done and put all the money they put into the, and into that roadway. As a result, um, they were amenable to, um, at least su, our suggestion of maybe allowing a land use change. So the applicant has now formally brought for both a land use change and a, um, zoning change to change this property for office development. They will be limited in the size, um, and scope of that project, basically because of the countywide rules. The countywide rules are going to limit them in the amount of F A R they can actually develop on the property, um, to twenty-five percent, I believe it was. And their maximum I S R is thirty-seven and a half percent. So that is about half of what they would normally get for, uh, uh, office development in this land use category. Um, we've actually asked the applicant to provide a restrictive covenant, basically codifying those onto the property, so that we can send that along with this application to the county, because this will require a countywide land use amendment. That's why you won't have second reading, uh, until sometime in the future, because it will need to go through the county's formal process before we can do that. Staff looked at this property. We have, um, some, uh, some very limited concerns, really, it was access and making sure that it was consistent with the countywide rules. With the restrictive covenant that the applicant has proposed, and at this point revised to meet all of our changes that we've requested, staff is no longer has any concerns at all, and staff is recommending approval of this, both the future land use amendment and the zoning change on this property to residential office general and residential office. And essentially, um, it's consistent with the concurrency analysis, it's consistent with the countywide rules based on the restrictive covenant, or, you know, pulling down the maximum density potent, or the maximum intensity potential for that property. So with that, staff is recommending approval of both ordinance two thousand seventeen, twenty-one, and twenty-two. And I can answer any questions that you may have.
Does the applicant wish to present to the commission tonight?
Commissioners, uh, Mr. City Manager, Mr. City Attorney, Todd Pressman, three-three-four, East Lake Road, number one oh two in Palm Harbor, Florida, here this evening, um, for the applicant, along with, uh, Katie Goff. Uh, just a few words, um, Heather presented it quite well to you. Uh, the T R C had no objections, your planning and zoning also was very, uh, supportive of the request. Um, as Heather's mentioned, it was good to work with Heather, there was a lot of details that we did work through very positively. Um, as she indicated, I want to place emphasis that Pinellas County, as well as the engineer for the project, Mr. Landon, who's been around for a long time, both agreed on the aspect of having another driveway, um, for the parcel as proposed. This application eliminates that, brings it back into the existing street off of, um, the busy roadway and the busy arterial, which was, of course, just, just completed. So everybody was in great agreement, and that was a, a way to move forward, to not have what those folks considered a dangerous circumstance potentially, as well as disrupting the flow of the roadway. Um, beyond that, we've had no opposition from anyone in the public. Uh, we haven't heard or seen anyone come forward. Uh, so, uh, this would be a request that is consistent. It's R O's, uh, the R O category is abutting the property. Uh, so in terms of what the surrounding uses are and surrounding categories, it certainly is compatible and cohesive. If there's any additional questions, we'll be happy to answer them for you.
Questions?
Sorry, I do have a question.
For sure.
Okay, so can you explain to me, so to access this property, you are going to be able to right from Keystone Road? Is that what? Okay.
No, the express purpose was so there was not an access on Keystone Road. The access will be on Lake Tarpon. Because the applicant owns property already at the corner of Lake Tarpon.
Right.
They will do a cross-access easement through their own property, and access to this property will be from Lake Tarpon. It's a unique circumstance because, again, the, the owner owns the property, um, which, uh, fronts on Lake Tarpon. So, um, Commissioner, I don't know if you can see this far, and I can bring this over to you and speak to the microphone over there if you'd like. So this is Keystone, this is Lake Tarpon, this is the subject parcel, and the property owner also owns this parcel, which is not before you tonight. So access will occur from Lake Tarpon as an easement through their own property.
Okay.
So there'll be no access on Keystone, which is what everybody's trying to get away from.
That's where your office is right now, or something, correct?
There, there's an office used there, yes.
Home-looking thing, a modern home-looking there?
Say again, sir?
It, it's like, it, it, it's like a modern structure?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir. Office, serves as an office use, yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Additional questions for Mr. Pressman? Other members of the public wishing to speak in opposition to the application? Members of the public wishing to speak in support? Does the applicant wish to make a closing statement of any kind?
We appreciate, I appreciate the hard work of your staff, we appreciate your consideration, thank you.
Staff wish to make a closing statement?
Not at this time.
All right. Uh, Mr. Vice Mayor, now you need a, a motion, uh, on the first ordinance twenty-seventeen dash twenty-one, and then, of course, on the second.
Okay. So can I get a motion for number five A, please?
Motion to approve ordinance 2017-21.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Kikta?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Banther?
Yes. Can I get a motion to approve item number five B?
Motion to approve ordinance 2017-22.
Second.
And the chair will, I'm sorry, roll call.
Commissioner Kikta?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Banther?
Yes. Next is number six, ordinance 2017-23, application 17-61. It's vacating and abandoning a utility and drainage easement, 933 Lynn Harbor Court.
Ordinance 2017-23, an ordinance of the city of Tarpon Springs, Florida, vacating and abandoning 144 square feet of the center, one-third of the 10-foot wide utility and drainage easement, located along the rear property line of 933 Lynn Harbor Court, Lot 152 Brittany Park, Phase 1A subdivision, providing for conditions, providing for findings, providing for future easements, providing for recordation of the public records of Pinellas County, and providing an effective date. It's the first reading of ordinance 2017-23 by title only. Second reading to be held on August 1, 2017. The ordinance was published in the Tampa Bay Times by title only on July 14, 2017, and July 21, 2017. Heather?
Yeah. With that, this is a vacation of a utility and drainage easement to allow a patio that was constructed without a permit and a retaining wall also without a permit within the easement to remain. Essentially, I've worked with our staff here in both our utility sections and in our drainage section. This drainage easement is not a drainage easement that we need for conveyance. As a matter of fact, right behind this is a large wetland area and a retention area. So this is not an easement where we're going to, this impediment's going to create some kind of problem. With that, I also had the applicant, this is a little bit different. You don't generally see these, plat vacations aren't very often done here in Tarpon. And as a result, I had the applicant go out and actually talk to the utility providers to make sure there were no other utilities in that easement. Generally, most of the fiber optic cable and that type of thing isn't along the rear of the property lines anymore, especially in this subdivision. It's a rather older subdivision. But I wanted to make sure that there were no improvements and that we received no objection letters from all of our utility providers that we normally see those letters as part of your street vacation process. So as a result, staff is recommending approval because there are no concerns really with this particular impediment. And the only way this person can actually permit the structure is to actually have right to that vacated area. So essentially, we need to vacate our right to that utility easement, the public right to that utility easement in order for this to move forward. And with that, I can answer any particular questions you have, but it's a very small 144 square feet of a patio that this gentleman really doesn't want to lose. Unfortunately, he can't be with us because he's celebrating his anniversary tonight, but he will be here for second reading if you have any specific questions.
Are there any questions for staff?
I don't have any questions, but it is after the fact. So I was, you know, obviously, you know, this applicant needs this to happen, but it just worries me that people do this without permitting and then ask for the...
I'm not sure if he actually put it in or if it was put in by a contractor. These tend to happen where a contractor tries to put in a permit and then doesn't actually get the permit. And the person doesn't know. They just start the work and they just assume that the permit's there. So it does happen. It doesn't happen not on a frequent basis, but it does happen. And I think that this is, that's the case in this case.
Okay. Thank you.
Do they get fined or anything?
When they go through the permitting process, how they're fined is the after-the-fact permit has a much larger cost associated with it than a permit would initially. I think it's three times the cost of the initial permit. So they get penalized from a financial perspective and a time perspective because honestly, their title's clouded until we go through this formal process. So not that he's leaving the house, but still, those things do happen. So that's really where his penalty comes in.
Thank you.
All right. You mentioned that the applicant was non-present.
Not present.
Okay. Are there any members of the public wishing to speak in opposition to the application? Members of the public wishing to speak in support? Anything else, Heather?
No. Not at this time.
The chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve ordinance 2017-23.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Kikta?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Banther?
Yes.
Thank you.
That concludes our short meeting tonight. Staff comments, police chief slash major, city attorney?
No comment.
City manager?
Just to remind you, we're back on normal schedule with August, so we'll be having a back-to-back meeting the next Tuesday, the first. Also, our first budget work session, which is again between myself and staff and the commission, will be Thursday, the third. There's a second date if needed, the 10th. I don't anticipate we're going to need the 10th. I think you've seen the budget. Most of what we'll do the third is announce you some changes, any changes that we've had. We're going to present the package of as far as raises and that sort of thing. So I think we can get that all into one meeting like last time. You're not going to see a lot different and any concerns you have, we're going to address as we did last time in one of the commission meetings. The last time, I think we put an item on for the second meeting, which would be the 15th of any other additional budget. So we could probably handle anything additional on the 15th, but the 10th is a reserved date open if we need to do it. Again, I don't anticipate we'll need the 10th. I think we can get it done in a couple hours on Thursday night. So that's the schedule for next week.
Madam Clerk?
No comment.
Commissioner Kikta?
I just have a question for the city manager. When it comes to the budget and also penny for Pinellas money, the golf course, I know nobody's mentioned the golf course. And I know there were some possible talks about expanding the facility or maybe a new building or something. I don't know if that's possible or what the cost would be. Is it something?
That's one of the things in our, for our 2020, 2030 penny for Pinellas, that's one of the suggestions in there.
Because if we expand, that's a revenue generating for us. And I think, you know, it's something that we really need to look at. Years ago, that was the place to go for breakfast. People all over from town, that's where, you know, and it was the meeting place. And I know there's, there might be a concern with parking over there or whatever, but just something I think we need to consider. Because I know, I remember quite a few years ago, they were in the red and there was monies borrowed to the golf course. I don't know if that's all been paid back yet or not.
Not yet. They're still working on it.
That's what I thought. So can I get some numbers on how much is still owed? Because I thought that they were still, I mean, it looks like, if you look at the numbers, it looks like they're in the black, but actually they were lent money from another fund.
And yes, and a lot of it, a lot of it we'll be able to talk about during our budget next year because we'll know if the penny passes or not. Hopefully, it will pass. Then we'll be able to do a, you know, a five-year penny like we usually do. We're a little reluctant now to do a five-year penny when we don't have the vote. Next year, hopefully, we'll be able to do that and look at the thing. And then you'll be able to look at your 2020, 2030 priorities and kind of say which are going to come in the first part. Well, a lot more to discuss during the next budget where we place the different things on your penny for Pinellas. But and that is one of the things on our list that we'll be advertising with the county and that you came up with here. That's one of the, that's one of the suggested uses of that money for there.
Thank you. And I want to wish Commissioner Seber a happy birthday.
Happy birthday. I think we're going to celebrate next Tuesday.
Yeah.
Yes.
Thank you.
Shorten staff. shorten.
And speaking of, Commissioner Seber?
Okay. Thank you, guys. I wasn't at this meeting, but I did watch it. I saw that the mayor proposed maybe asking for paid parking from the city parking lots on Dodo Canays. Am I correct in that? You mentioned something about that?
No.
I watched the meeting and he mentions, and I know that we have the parking lot in the Marina and of course, the one where the bathrooms are. And just wondered, we're talking about making a little extra money, especially as we may lose some with the homestead exemption, of that being a recommendation.
A lot of parking meters.
For, you know, a paid meter for our city lots on...
I just keep hearing nightmares going on in Dunedin every time I meet with somebody down there. So I don't think you'll see the city manager proposing it because they are going through some bad issues with their citizens on their paid parking.
Yeah, I understand that. But we already have paid parking on Dodo Canays. So, you know, just a thought.
Well, remember when we had the meters and then Dunedin did away with theirs, so then we did away with ours. Well, now it's back down there. They have those...
Right.
Place you go, you know, whatever, the one spot that you go and pay. It's ridiculous.
Those citizens are not happy down there.
Yeah.
But again, it's, you know, it's something that could be considered.
Those are the only two lots, basically, that you don't have to pay for is our city lots down there.
I'll use my comments for the city manager. Could you update everyone on the, what's it, the DOE grant for the dredge? What's it called?
Yes. Yes. Tomorrow, tomorrow, we'll give you a copy. We've submitted late this afternoon for the grant, the state of Florida for the economic grant. Mr. Robertson did that and we submitted this afternoon. You'll be getting copies. We'll put copies of it on the website tomorrow. I was very happy to see the grant because I was worried about how it was written, if it would have some things that would be difficult for us. But that grant looks, you know, you know, I'd be glad to compete with others in the state for that money. I think our waterfront and our dredge, I think, again, I was encouraged to see the dredge because every element that grants looking for, we have with the dredge project. So we've got submitted and we're starting the process. By tomorrow, everybody you can think of is going to be sent copies, Representative Sprouse, the governor's office, pretty much everybody we've talked to about this grant up here will have a copy. Besides the official submittal that we've done electronically today, we're going to be sending hard copies of it to almost everybody we can talk to. And if you have anybody else you want me to send it to, we're sending it to everybody. But, you know, despite what happened with the budget, where we really, if you look why our money was cut from the budget, obviously, somebody didn't read the, read what the item was. So but I think we should get this one and if politics doesn't become involved, you know, I think we have a good chance to get this money.
Very good. If that's it, we'll conclude our meeting at 7:10.
Good job.
Yes, yes. This is a big one.
One, two. It's about two hours northwest of Philadelphia.